Call the meeting order and good afternoon and welcome to the March 18th, 2024 meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. I'm Jeff Ramsey, Chairman of the Board. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. To my left is our Vice Chair Doc Cherry and I'd like to ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Lee Edman, Gastonia Township.
Josh Crisp, Dallas Township.
Robbie Lovelace, Cherryville Township.
Todd Kinlaw, South Point Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia.
Brent Moore, Crowes Mountain Township.
Thank you. Our first order of business is to have our invocation. I would like to ask Pastor Dicky Spargo of the City Church of Gastonia to lead us in our invocation. Welcome.
All right, thank you. Well, it's good to be here tonight. Let's just thank God for another day that we've had. Come on, y'all. And, you know, we're praying for our school board, praying for everyone here. We got a wonderful school system, you know, if you'll allow me. You give a preacher a microphone, he gonna say something, little brother. But, you know, I think one of the most important things we can do in life is be encouraged. The last thing my wife needs is a discouraged husband and my kids don't need a discouraged dad and our church doesn't need a discouraged pastor. And for all of us, you know, just be encouraged that things could be better. But I got news for you, things could be a whole lot worse. So, we're gonna pray and we're gonna ask God to be with us in this time. Father, thank you for this opportunity we have today to celebrate another day. And we know, Lord, that you are ultimately in charge. I pray for our school board. I pray for wisdom. I thank you for the parents and the students that are here tonight. And we ask, Lord, for your divine wisdom. We pray for your protection over our schools, for your protection over our students. We pray, Lord, that you will continue to lead and guide our county to be better than we've ever been before. Bless this meeting and bless all who speak. And we thank you for another day, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Spargo, and thank you for your continued support and your church to Gaston County School System. Now, I would like to ask our Superintendent Dr. Morgan Hushard to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Bram Comer to come forward, please, of Cramertown Middle School. He has volunteered today to lead us in our pledge. Thank you, Bram.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bram.
Thank you, Bram. Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt our agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Moore makes the motion, second to Mr. Chris. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Our next order of business to hear good news happening in our schools. And from the look of this boardroom, it looks like we have a lot of good news to share. So, Todd Higgins, what good news do you have to share with?
Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the Board and Superintendent Hushard, I am pleased to present to the Board of Education our good news for the month of March, and we have several items to share with you this evening. First, we want to acknowledge the outstanding work of our school nutrition department, and we would like for school nutrition director Angela Calamia and school nutrition coordinator Margaret Cameron to come forward, along with Marcus Sipien from the Cooperative Extension Service. We'll have you stand there on that. We are proud to announce this evening that Gaston County Schools is the recipient of the Farm to Summer Award from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Gaston County is one of only seven agencies in the state to earn recognition for having a successful summer nutrition program. Here in Gaston County Schools, our good agricultural practices, G A P certified, school garden has quickly grown in size to become a small farm of more than a half acre. Because of our summertime gardening efforts, children involved in our nutrition program last summer were able to enjoy farm-fresh produce, which included 750 pounds of cucumbers and 40 pounds of cherry tomatoes, and I think Angela picked them all, right? And those were harvested from our garden. We also are pleased to share that our garden is expanding and we are able to serve the vegetables in our school lunch program. For example, this spring, students will be able to eat lettuce and carrots that are being grown right here in our school nutrition garden. We are very proud of the work done every day by our school nutrition personnel, and we are hopeful that our garden will produce a bountiful harvest of fresh food that can be served in our school cafeterias and during our summer nutrition program.
You don't ever think that in 2024, we'd be growing our own food. Seriously, did you ever think of that? It's amazing. I can't wait to see how much more it continues to grow. Our nutrition department is phenomenal in so many ways, but this is just another thing that they have come up with and they've created and they've seen through fruition that our children are benefiting from. So, we couldn't be more pleased. And I know y'all are all touched by the cafeteria workers at all the schools. We couldn't do it without them. We couldn't do it without the large staff that I pass trucks at 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning when I'm going to my office that have already delivered the food that we make in one central location. It is an amazingly efficient process. So, but this is just another element that they've come up with. You're wonderful people and you take care of our kids. So, thank you so very much.
of Stewart W Kramer High School to come forward. And we'll allow the coaches and staff to come forward and join them as well because we want everyone to know that before you this evening are our two state champions in wrestling. Landon, who is a junior at North Gaston, won an individual 3A state championship in the 150-pound weight class. He finished this year with an impressive 56-7 record. Bentley, who is a sophomore at Stewart W Kramer, won an individual 3A state championship in the 132-pound weight class. This is Bentley's second consecutive year for winning a state wrestling championship, and he finished this season with an amazing 51-1 record. Please join me again in congratulating our state wrestling champions, and we are confident that they will have a winning season again next year. Congratulations.
I know y'all, he said you wanted 10 minutes to the rest of the crowds, so I'm gonna step back. Both said no really quick. No, seriously, we are super proud of our athletes. We know that it takes a lot of dedication to not only maintain classroom performance to be eligible to wrestle, but to go as far as they did in this demanding sport. So, congratulate them. We are certainly appreciative of all their hard work. So, give them another round of applause.
I'll take a group photo first and I'll separate them by school. You can get in, Mr. Crisp. All right, North Gaston, you guys slide it out way. Ms. Howser, anybody else in North Gaston want to come up? Parents or...
One more. All right, thank you.
I can do it.
One more. All right, let me get my camera. And one more. All right, thank you.
March is arts in our school month, so it is appropriate that we shift our attention to the fine arts and the students who were chosen for the All-State Band Program. We would like for Akila Taylor from Highland School of Technology and Bram Comer and Annabelle Radford, both from Kramer to Middle School, to come forward at this time. These three students successfully auditioned earlier this month and earned invitations to the North Carolina All-State Honors Band Clinic, which is scheduled for April the 26th through the 28th at UNC Greensboro. Already this year, Akila on percussion, Bram on bassoon, and Annabelle on trombone demonstrated their musical talents as part of the South-Central All-District Band Clinic, which was hosted at Stewart W Kramer High School. And now, they are taking their talent from the district level to the state level, and we are very excited about having them, having the opportunity for them to represent Gaston County Schools and perform with the All-State Band. We are incredibly proud of the fine arts in Gaston County Schools, and we commend all students, teachers, and directors for what they are doing to give us one of the best fine arts education programs.
We are very proud of our fine arts. We'll round the kids, do lots of different activities. We have to have our reading and math, but all the extras make for a whole child. And that's what we, that's what we practice very well in Gaston County. What year are you?
I'm in eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
Okay. So, how good was the competition?
Oh, the audition itself.
The what?
The audition itself.
Yeah. I mean, did I misunderstand what Mr. Higgins said? Because I'm old.
Yeah, they won the audition, and now they're going to the All-State Band. And I want to clarify something else because in my notes, I had it backwards. Bram does not play the bassoon. He plays the trombone. And Annabelle does not play the trombone. She plays the bassoon. So, I apologize for that.
See, I don't feel so bad making errors.
Please clear. The way that it works up is that we're part of the South-Central District, and then the students audition for that. And if they make a certain chair, a high enough chair in the South-Central District, then they proceed on to audition for the state. And then for Annabelle, she competed against, I think, 14 bassoon, no.
I think four.
Yeah, it was 14 bassoon players that she competed against. And then how many trombone players?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one trombone players, and they all accepted a certain amount of each one. So, they really, yeah, I'm not sure for percussion, it's...
She had 14 other percussion.
Yeah, 14 other percussion. So, these are, yeah, these are the top notch that we have in Gaston County.
Excellent. We're looking forward to rewarding you again.
Oh, thank you.
So, on behalf of the Board and our Chair and Superintendent.
We appreciate it, us.
Well, we appreciate y'all. It makes out everything sister do. So, come on, show them.
Doc, can we put the kids, I'm gonna put the kids together if you don't mind.
Oh, gosh, well, I am a kid.
Oh, here, scoot down some.
I am a kid.
All right, all right. Everybody scoot down just a bit. One more. There we go. All right. Let me get one.
Do we have parents?
Let me go in the front a little quickly. I'll send us two.
Hey, 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 hey.
All right, look this way. And one more. All right. I can't see you. I can't see you. You're a little tall. And one more. All right, thank you.
This evening, we have with us two of the three students who earned first-place honors at the UNC Charlotte Region Six Science and Engineering Fair. With us are elementary students LB Luchel of Robinson Elementary and Henry Markwith of Hawksnest Steam Academy, and we would like for them to come forward at this time. Jillian Schultes of Stanley Middle School, who placed first in the chemistry category, could not be with us this evening. LB won first place in the biological science category for her project titled Soda Seeds. She wanted to know if seeds could grow with soda and which soda helped them grow the best. LB tested four types of soda with beans. She discovered that the soda with no sugar or caffeine made the seeds grow the best. Henry won first place in the engineering and technology category for his project titled A Sticky Situation: Investigating the Strength of Glue Bonds. His project found out which bonding agent held wood together when tested under the pressure of weight. We would like to congratulate LB, Henry, and Jillian on winning first place at the regional level, and we would like to extend our best wishes to all 22 students who qualified at the regionals to go on to the North Carolina State Science and Engineering Fair that is coming up this Saturday.
I had so much fun at their science fair. I went to the elementary and the middle school. They had fun, didn't they? And their projects were crazy good. Everything that you could possibly think of and then things you would have never thought of if they did their project. So, I've gotta ask, what kind of soda doesn't have sugar in?
I chose Sprite.
Okay, what was the other thing you said didn't have sugar in? What?
Caffeine.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Hold on to that. But they were just so happy to be with all their other kids from every school and showing off the smarts that they had, but still having a good time meeting everybody, right? What did you like most about it?
I liked when the judges were able to come around.
You did? What about you?
When you got interviewed.
When you got interviewed. My favorite part was giving you your medals. So, we're very, very proud of them. Good job. Good job.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have five students with us from the Gaston Early College of Medical Sciences: Afaya Rajah, Alyssa Carpenter, Sadie Morton, Marissa Lemoine, and Autumn Queen. And we would like for them to come forward at this time. These students collaborated with therapist Rose Planner and Molly Weakland from Hope United to establish a Gaston County Dating Violence Awareness Club called Y O U, and Y O U is capitalized. The 30-member club, which is spearheaded by students at Gaston Early College of Medical Sciences, is dedicated to advocating for healthy relationships. During Dating Violence Awareness Month in February, they initiated an awareness campaign at their school and on the campus at Gaston College. Now, they are working to expand their reach to other high schools. Looking ahead, the club is organizing a summit on Thursday, April the 18th at Gaston College from 2 until 4 p.m. The event is for students from across the county and features a keynote speaker and breakout sessions that will be led by the club members. The sessions are designed to give participants the encouragement and knowledge to start similar advocacy groups at their schools. Desiree Lackey, the school counselor, serves as the faculty advisor for the youth club, and we are very proud of what these students are doing to focus on positive relationships, healthy living, self-care, and well-being for all students in Gaston County.
So, I don't know that I could have said it any better than Mr. Higgins did. So, we're so proud of these young ladies for taking the initiative, and this is true leadership, not only to look out for one another, to look out for their peers, but to have the skills at this age, obviously with some guidance from our leaders, to develop a program, a conference, and all the work that goes into that. We couldn't be more proud. And to know that as long as they stick with what they're doing, they're walking out of our programs in five years with an associate's degree and a high school diploma, and if they want it, guaranteed admission in this nursing program. So, what more could you ask? Thank you.
I'll take this picture for you and Mr. Crisp, and I'll invite the staff from Early College of Medical Sciences. All right. You can open that flag up, Ms. Lackey.
previously served as the principal at Tryon Elementary School, to join us up front. We are pleased to announce this evening that Ms. LaFeverz has been chosen to serve as an Epic Educator for the 2024 Model Schools Conference this June in Orlando, Florida. She is one of only 11 educators from across the country to be selected for the Epic Educator recognition this year by the Center for Model Schools. This is an outstanding honor for Ms. LaFeverz, and we are grateful for the knowledge, skill, and expertise that she brings to her work in Gaston County Schools. Congratulations on being named an Epic Educator for 2024. Congratulations.
Megan, here we are again.
Megan is a former student of mine. I had Megan at Cherf High School in all levels of Spanish, and I could predict that this was gonna happen someday, you know what I'm saying? And she's not finished yet.
And she's not finished yet. Dr. Hushard, I think she will probably end up as a superintendent someday. Hopefully, it'll be in Gaston County schools. I told you that. She was a teaching fellows, and she was a principal's fellows, and she has had numerous awards since then, and I cannot say enough of good things about Megan. Now, you're going to get to go to Orlando, Florida in June, and Lord, if you so desire, someone can make the motion to have me to go with her. She needs a shout-out. She has a shout-out. Yes, really, really, she needs things. So, go ahead and take care of the paperwork, because I would love to go with you. But on behalf of Gaston County Schools and Gaston County Board of Education and our superintendent, we would like to congratulate you for this honor. As you know, it's one in 11. Not many people get to have this honor. So let's give another round of applause. (applause) She was a foreign, her brother was a foreign language teacher also.
One more? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bring up Dr. Hugman. Come on, we'll bring him up, Dr. Hugman, come on.
Absolutely.
She let my principal down. Come on, Brian. I'm going to get you.
Thank you.
And for our final good news item this evening, we want the Board of Education to know that Gaston County Schools has received the Spirit of North Carolina Award from the United Way. Valerie Yatko and I had an opportunity to present a session at the United Way of North Carolina's Best Practices Showcase, and we shared about what our schools and departments do to generate interest and support for fundraising for our local United Way. I may be a little bit biased, but I believe our presentation was the best, and attendees seemed amazed to learn that we raised almost $115,000 this year for the United Way here in Gaston County. And, Mr. Chairman, that completes our good news for this evening.
Well, thank you, Todd, for all that great news you're sharing with us. The next item on the agenda is our Classroom Moment. Our teachers and students do amazing things in each of our schools every day. This agenda gives us the opportunity to share some of that with the members of the board and those who are watching on TV. So tonight, Dr. Aaron Seleski, our Chief Technology Officer, is going to lead us in this Classroom Moment.
I know. That was embarrassing. But I hope that wasn't on TV. All right. Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, Superintendent Hushard, and members of the board, it is my pleasure to present our Classroom Moment tonight. We aim to show you a glimpse into a classroom where technology enhances student learning, and I would like to introduce one of our ITFs, or Instructional Technology Facilitators, Ms. Crystal Schrader. She is tasked with merging her technical and teaching knowledge with the teacher's teaching and content knowledge to make learning happen in the classroom.
I'm sure you've noticed, since the onset of the COVID pandemic, educational technology, including devices, software programs, instructional tools, and more, have become increasingly abundant. However, access alone to this technology does not result in the significantly improved educational outcomes in students, as we would hope. In its National Educational Technology Plan, released in January of 2024, the Office of Educational Technology highlighted an alarming disparity in learning outcomes based on how students are using technology in the classroom. They're calling this the digital use divide. On one side of the divide are students who are asked to use technology for passive assignment completion, including activities such as completing digital worksheets and assessments, or consuming digital content like instructional videos, online lessons, and more, without accompanying reflection, imagination, or participation. On the other side are students who are asked to actively use technology in their learning to analyze, build, produce, and create using digital tools, which can include coding, immersive simulations, media production, interaction with experts, making global connections, design thinking, and peer collaboration. In Gaston County, we've established our vision for our portrait of a graduate, which outlines attributes and skills we strive to instill in all of our students. All of these attributes are encompassed in the Digital Learning Standards for Students, which guide the work of our Instructional Technology Department, where our ITFs work to ensure that all students have transformative, active, creative, and critically thoughtful experiences supported by technology. So tonight, I am excited to be joined by Mrs. Jessica Price, one of the amazing science teachers at East Gaston High School. She and her students are going to do a short demonstration of a recent lesson they did about learning about the process of mitosis. You'll learn, we'll learn about what that is in just a minute. In the demonstration, students will demonstrate an active use of technology, in this case they'll be using an iPad, by creating a visualization of the process of mitosis using stop-motion animation. Now, as I mentioned, we are all about active use of technology, so after Mrs. Price has a chance to introduce the lesson, we're going to, we're going to have Dr. Hushard come down to participate in our lesson. So at this time, I'll introduce Mrs. Jessica Price.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of you all for having us this evening. I am honored to introduce these wonderful students from East Gaston High School. They make up a variety of our classes, our biology classes, some from this semester, some from last semester, different levels, language, all kinds of different aspects. But here tonight, I have Bailey, Ayana, Jacob, Tommy, and Lizzie, and they're kind of spread out here for us, and they are going to demonstrate and walk you through the process of mitosis by integrating the science concept and the technology use of stop motion. They, as I said a minute ago, I got ahead of myself. This group here represents what we have done with our entire biology department, various levels, languages, adaptability. We've adapted it to so many different aspects of the classroom, and they've all been able to work through it. It's been wonderful. Before I get started, I would like to explain how I got here tonight. As a new teacher, with what my kids say is an old-school mentality a little bit, I'm also a mother of two high school boys whom I had the opportunity to sit with and work through the COVID days. They called it kitchen table classes. They hated much of those days. But what we learned together in those classes was that in order to be successful, they were going to, we were going to have to change the way we were doing it. Yes, they had Canvas, yes, they had the computers, but we had to get outside. We had to put our hands on science and math. They had to actively do science and math in order to retain what they were being instructed via the Chromebook, the technology that we have available. Fast forward to the past two years, I have been very fortunate to be in the biology classroom at East Gaston High School, where my children are at, which was nice. I'm a graduate there, so it's nice being back in that setting. But doing that, all I could think about when I was asked if I would like to take the position was, how do I get hands-on science versus how do I incorporate technology plus the lesson in a hands-on method? So that was my biggest struggle going into it. They laugh at me because they, if I don't know, I just ask my kids, my students. I don't know how to work Snap and TikTok, and I don't have time for that. But they are able to do it, and I can't take 70 kids a semester home to my kitchen table or my backyard or my farm. So we, I've tried, we've tried very hard. And in doing so, with this particular lesson, I wanted to find a way to help them go beyond reading and watching mitosis and get that hands-on experience. So I did reach out to some of my colleagues. Brian Johnson is a phenomenal resource, and this is a learning target that we have or a standard, but we were able to incorporate it. His students use their cell phones, their personal iPhones, in order to do this process. I don't have that capability. Some of my students don't have iPhones, and I don't have iPads. So I was able to reach out to Crystal, I'm sorry, to Ms. Schrader. And so I reached out to her and said, you know, I want to do this. This is very intriguing. It's very interesting and exciting that we can do stop motion. Tell me what stop motion is, you know? And she was like, okay. And I said, but how do I make this happen in my classroom? Fortunately, she's a wonderful resource. She reached out, and she got back with me and said, absolutely, we can, we can work on this. She not only educated me on what stop motion was, what apps were available, and what the county had, she brought the iPads to my classrooms, and we set up, she co-talked with me. She taught the technology side, I taught the biology side. We worked together interchangeably. I was able to, we set up, we actually started in my classroom. She was able to go over a demonstration, walk them through. I learned what stop motion was. Many of you may know claymation stop motion, or claymation animation, The Nightmare Before Christmas, Elf, there's certain things like that. That's all claymation. And so we were able, she was able to bring that to light in our classroom, and once the students were like, oh, yes, we know what that is now that you mention it, it became more exciting for them. They wanted to get in there and play with that Play-Doh, manipulate that series of cell division and so forth that we were working with. And so it gave me the opportunity to work one-on-one with my students to make sure they were understanding the concept, getting all of the information, and then she could handle the technology side. So it was a wonderful collaborative effort on the technology and science side. So without further ado, I do want to turn it over to these, to my students here. They would like to demonstrate how stop-motion animation works for mitosis. And Dr. Hushard, if you'd like to come join us, they'd love to walk you through it. Bailey and Tommy here are going to give you a little, little heads-up on how it works, and Lizzie and Ayana and Jacob are going to actually start the, when they have to do a product. This was a lab that we were able to accomplish in one classroom setting. It gave us time to set up, do the material, or do the lab, reflect, and review on it. The object of being able to go back and watch our video to see what we've accomplished and what has happened in that process was the key tart, was the key point of that. They didn't miss a step. They were able to review it over and over and over again. So, I'm going to turn it over to Bailey and Tommy.
Mitosis is the part of the cell cycle where the cell divides. It happens after interphase, and the results of mitosis is two identical diploid daughter cells. This process happens all, happens in all body cells and is responsible for growth, development, and repair. So every time you scratch your arm or get an injury, the cells involved must replicate the DNA, which happens in interphase. Then in order to heal or repair the cell, must divide into two new cells with the same DNA. That's why when I get a cut, the same type of issue grows, tissue grows back instead of hair or an extra arm.
Stop-motion animation, or known as claymation, to most is where you use clay. We use Play-Doh to create a movie by moving the clay in very small increments to take dozens or even hundreds of photos that we will play back like a seamless movie.
The team at the table started out with their cell and interphase, which means they had a cell membrane, nuclear membrane, chromatin, and centromere in places, in place before they started taking photos. Interphase is the longest part of the cell cycle and is where the DNA replicates and prepares for division. Once the cell has moved through the G2 phase, it is ready to divide, and mitosis begins with prophase. In prophase, the nuclear membrane starts to break down, the centromeres move to opposite sides of the DNA core and forms actual chromosomes.
After the nuclear membrane is fully dissolved and the centrioles have moved to the opposite side, the chromosomes line up in the middle of the cell and spindle fibers are attached to each. This is metaphase. Once the process is complete, the chromosomes are pulled apart in anaphase. This happens really fast and is hard to capture in a regular lab, so by doing with stop motion, we can actually see the process. Once the chromosomes have been separated, the spindle fibers shorten and disappear, while the nuclear membrane starts to reform and the cell membrane starts to close in the middle. This is telephase, in this final stage of cell division.
What happens next is not part of mitosis, but the final stage of the cell cycle, and is where the cell membrane fully separates and two new cells are formed, both identical to the original parent cell. This is cytokinesis. Once this is complete, we can compare the two daughter cells to the parent cell. Stop motion makes this easy to see once we play the movie. Here's an example of the finished movie.
While they're working, they're moving through this a little faster than we did in our 90-minute day, our class period, but this is a product of one of our classes. But if it, it shows you here how we've walked through the entire process. This is my metaphase, anaphase, it's going away, we're into telephase, and now into cytokinesis. It seems really fast, but that small blip of two or three seconds was probably 70 or 80 frames, an average, just first perspective, to produce like the movie Nightmare Before Christmas. It was, it took over 24 frames per second, over a year to produce that 70-minute movie, and then three years to edit it back. So these, our students were able to do this entire process in a class period and then go back and watch it. The smaller the movement, the smaller the changes you're able to make, the more fluid it looks like a full movie instead of just individual pictures. But taking it from a paper document where we're just coloring, or watching it in a video on TV, this makes it more lifelike. They're able to put their hands on it and then go back and say, oh, that happened after this happened because of that, and they can really put it into order and perspective.
Respond to this question. How did this activity help you better understand mitosis?
The activity helped me understand mitosis better, since it was hands-on and it wasn't just an activity that like we did on the Chromebook or on paper. So since I actually got to do it, I feel like I learned more from it. How was learning this way better than completing a worksheet or watching a video lesson?
Personally, I'm a very hands-on learner. I don't like to do much on Chromebooks. I'm not a big fan of just looking at the light, gives me headaches. Also have dysgraphia, so when I'm reading stuff on a Chromebook, it kind of gets all jumbled up a little bit. So by getting, be able to physically touch it and move stuff, it makes it a lot easier for me to comprehend.
Yeah, I felt like it was easier to actually do it instead of just like watching it be done on like a Chromebook or like a paper.
Thank you guys very much. We have, we've simplified it tonight for you all, but you get the gist. So, these are, these are my wonderful students. None of these students are in the same class, they've, but they've all done the activity and they've all come together and can replicate it over and over with the same information. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want, first of all, that was phenomenal. Students, that was great. You realized your responsibility in making that project, and you handled it well. You were focused. I loved that. You talked about hands-on, and as the teacher was introducing the lesson to us, interwoven into your lesson was Garner's multiple intelligences. I saw that. And I know that each student had a responsibility that he or she wanted to accomplish. You did that. That was just wonderful. And in the end, you actually And in the end, you actually asked, what made this different? And you told why it was important to you. And when you know that you are a part of a team and you do your job, what do you expect? A successful outcome. That was phenomenal. And I want you to know that. Thank you so much.
I asked each of them if, if it helped them retain this, the information better by, by using this mode of learning, and they all said yes. So to me, that's a win-win right there. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank y'all. And we appreciate it. All it's done in all of our classrooms every day. Our next item on the agenda is allow the opportunity for public expressions. This is time when the board will be, will hear comments from the citizens about the matters of public concerns related to the school system. Our board policy sets aside the first thirty minutes of our regular monthly meeting for citizens to address the board. Before we hear from the public, let me outline the rules of procedures. Citizens wishing to make comments and who have completed a request to speak before and prior to the beginning of the meeting will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone and make their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Members of the board do not respond to public expression during public comments period. Public expression does not allow for comments on confidential personnel matters. Speakers who wish to give materials to the board will hand it to our clerk. The chair will rule at all points of order during public expression. And we have two people sign it. The first one's Mandy Roberts.
Hi. Mandy Roberts. We are at twenty-three seventeen Scottwood Drive, Gastonia, North Carolina. Our child, Carter Roberts, a junior this year, is a straight A student. A member of the National Health Society, holds a part-time job in our community and is a student athlete. Through a series of unfortunate events that are outlined in the letter provided, we were forced to move our child to a Cleveland County school. In the interest of time, since parents are only given three minutes to address concerns, I will focus this part of the conversation on the latest decision that Gaston County Schools has made that negatively impacts students, specifically Carter. In February, Carter was forced from East Gaston High School. Despite the efforts of many, some of whom are sitting in this room, the only option of a school that he was offered was one that has not met performance goals in at least two years, continues to have high rates of criminal acts, bullying and harassment, suspensions, and referral to law enforcement, according to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. We believe this issue arose due to athletics, as Carter attending East Gaston had not been a problem until the first day of baseball workouts. As parents, we ask that he be allowed to forfeit athletics in exchange for remaining in the school for the final four months of the school year. Many understood that his grades at the end of this year will be the grades that he uses for college applications. Moving a child during a school year has been proven to be detrimental to their academics as well as their mental health. Thus forcing him to make a move at this time could have lasting implications for his future. Still, we were refused, even though East Gaston has three hundred available seats. In researching options, we found that both Cleveland and Lincoln Countings accept transfers. We applied for a transfer to Kings Mountain High School because it was the closest high school to our current home. A rule in North Carolina states that when a student moves schools, absent a bona fide change in residence, that students must sit out athletics for three hundred and sixty-five days. While I understand the guidelines must be in place, I feel that everyone should work to uphold those guidelines with integrity. This rule also affords a waiver of the three hundred and sixty-five days, provided the school that the child is transferring from agrees the move is not athletically related. Since our move had nothing to do with athletics and everything to do with what was best was Carter's academic future, it seemed easy for Chad Duncan to check the box that the move was not athletically related. Chad informed me he believed the move was athletically related because he said we could have chosen Clover or Lincoln County. Clover schools are in South Carolina and we are North Carolina residents, so I was not aware that was an option. A Lincoln County high school hurled racial insults at Carter during a game last year in which he was the pitcher. Only showing, after only showing them the video proof, did they admit and apologize. So moving our child to that county was not an option we felt comfortable with. Chad is well aware that this move is to Cleveland County is not athletically related and chose to use Carter in a grudge match between the counties over athletics. For us, which school Carter attends has never been about athletics. However, upon being ripped from a school, teachers and friends that he loved, we noticed a definite change in his demeanor. Our normally happy child who loved attending school was having a hard time with this move. He shared with us that he felt if he was allowed to play baseball, he would be able to make more friends and feel like he was a part of that school community. Since additional children have applied or will apply for transfers to other counties, we hope that you will finally stop using these children in your own political agendas and not put other families through this turmoil. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Next person to sign it, Lynetta Christine.
Lynette Christensen, three twenty-six Pine Avenue, Cherryville, North Carolina. Hello, my name's Lynette Christensen. I currently work as a lead custodian in Gaston County School System. I previously worked as a bus driver at Cherryville High School for seven years and a part-time custodian at Cherryville Elementary School for two years. I addressed you today because the custodians need a raise. The work we do includes manual labor such as moving furniture, stripping and waxing the floors in the summer, assisting teachers in moving furniture and heavy file cabinets, and any extra jobs fixing little things like cabinet doors. Custodians are greatly underappreciated. We have a lot to do such as sweeping, mopping, changing lights, dusting each room, and we have limited time to do it. Each room has rugs, needs vacuuming, and the hallways need mopping. The many bathrooms include sinks, toilets, floors, mirrors, door handles, and light switches need cleaning and disinfecting for safety. Also, the extra cleanup and disinfecting of vomit. All the windows need cleaning and dusting for cobwebs inside and out. We are constantly putting up and keeping up with the stock, paper towels, toilet paper, and soap so that we do not run out. Bus drivers make seventeen dollars an hour. Custodians make fifteen dollars and sixty cents, a difference of a dollar forty. Our work involves long hours and safety and well-being of the students and faculty of Gaston County Schools. Please consider giving the custodians a raise to a salary comparable to the bus drivers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We continue for concern for Gaston County Schools. Although the board does not typically respond during the period of public comment, we do want to hear from the public and direct staff to work on those issues that need to be addressed. So thank you for your comments. The next item on the agenda is approval and correction of minutes. I need a motion to approve February nineteenth and February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Kenlaw made a motion to have a second. Oh, Mr. Dedman, second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. The next item on the agenda is a report from the Operations Committee. The Operations Committee is made up of Chair Brent Moore, Lee Dedman, Dot Cherry, and A.M. Stevens. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, Dot Cherry will be giving that report.
The Operations Committee met on Monday, March fourth, uh, two thousand twenty-four at eight-thirty a.m. The agenda and discussion included the following. Chip RV, Director of Facilities, updated some, updated us on the current projects, including the roof at Stanley Middle, athletic fields at Stuart Kramer, and the progression made at the New Greer Middle School construction site. The current design is to have natural turf field. However, the city of Gastonia has offered seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to install an artificial turf field, excuse me. Gary Hoskins, um, our CFO, shared that six, sixty million of the two, two thousand eighteen school bond has been fully encumbered. From the eighty million, um, two thousand twenty-three school bond, fifty-seven million has been used for the New Greer Middle School. Eighteen million is being used for the existing capital projects and five million is unencumbered. One hundred and ten million is remaining for school bonds that, that is unissued. The superintendent's budget request was discussed and will be presented for discussion by the full board later in this meeting. Our independent auditor has retired and we are currently searching for a new audit firm. This matter will be presented for discussion and approval later in this meeting. Each year, the board approves the authorization of the reduction in force if needed. This item, again, will be on the consent agenda at this meeting for approval. Erin Slusky, our chief technology officer, informed us that TSS has been in contact with Huddle in reference to the installing of cameras for high school athletics. TSS is working to vet their software and hardware before making any recommendations to this committee. The committee also reviewed and is recommending, uh, approval for the following contracts on the consent agenda. Microsoft Software Agreement, Student Chromebook Purchase, Google Workspace Agreement, Belmont Middle School Intercom Uplift, Upfit, excuse me, Stanley Middle School Intercom Upfit, Hawksnest Steam Academy, HVAC Replacement, various schools, freezer and, uh, cooler design services, and Holbrook Middle School Football Field Renovation and Irrigation. Our next meeting will be Monday, April eighth, at eight-thirty a.m. here in the boardroom.
Thank you for that report. The next item on the agenda is the report from the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. The members of that committee are Chair Josh Chris, Dot Guthrie, Robbie Lovelace, and Todd Kenlaw. Mr. Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met Monday, March the fourth, uh, twenty-twenty-four at eleven-thirty. Uh, all of our committee members were present. Tyler West, Executive Director of Elementary Instruction, presented on Reed to Achieve Summer Reading Camps. Uh, gave us an update there. Reed to Achieve Summer Camps will be offered to rising third and fourth grade students who were not proficient readers at the middle-of-the-year universal screener. Seven sites will host students from all elementary schools in these grade levels. The camp's purpose is to afford positive reading outcomes for students according to General Statute one-one-five C dash eighty-three point seven A. Dr. Cynthia Reynolds, Director of Federal Programs and After-School Programs, presented information on the Aspire Plus After-School Parent Paid, which was piloted August twenty-twenty-three. After analyzing the parent survey and enrollment numbers for this school year, running an Aspire Plus After-School Program at Pinewood Elementary during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is not fiscally feasible. Dr. Rebecca Powers, Chief Accountability Officer, discussed North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's requirements for high schools to administer final exams, including end-of-course tests, career and technical education exams, and teacher-made exams. The spring exam schedule for early college is May thirteenth through seventeenth. The exam schedule for traditional high schools is May sixteenth through the twenty-second. And Dr. Powers will share this information with the full board later in this meeting. Dr. Stacy Huffman, Executive Director of Exceptional Children's Programs, asked the board to consider increasing the potential amount to be expended from four point five million to six million for this year for, and the remainder, remaining two years of our three-year contract for contracts with outside agencies to provide various services to support our students. This is a response to the increased student needs and increased employment vacancies. This item is on the consent agenda for approval. Brett Buchanan, CTE Director, provided updates regarding the twenty-two, twenty-three CTE Accountability, Career Awareness, the Business Advocacy Council, and the progress on the CTE Career Awareness Center. The committee discussed career and college pathways and asked for additional information at its next, next meeting. Superintendent Morgan Hushard introduced Tanya Kales, our new Associate Superintendent for Academic Services, and her first official day will be April first, twenty-four. The meeting adjourned at twelve-fifty p.m. and our next meeting will be Monday, April
Be forthcoming at our next meeting.
Mind, if, if I read that, my interpretation of that reading, Ms. Guthrie, is that that was just the presentation that staff made. Uh, and we did direct them to come back to our next meeting with additional options.
So, but it sounds now like it was a final decision.
I, I don't believe that was the case. I think we, that was their presentation to us and we asked them to come back with options to see if we could find, if, if we could find a way to make it work.
That is correct, yes. Okay, but that's not, uh, the way that I interpreted that, those minutes.
Do we need to clear that up in any way, or is that?
I think we need to. I think we need to because it was
Not final.
So you can take care of that in your committee meeting minutes? This is just a report from that meeting, so I would suggest you take care of that in your minutes.
It was not final. So it needs to be indicated or read that way.
And Ms. Guthrie, I will tell you, we are looking into alternatives moving forward as well.
But when I hear it was not, it was not, uh, physically achievable, I am hearing that it's almost final. So I don't like the way that those, uh, minutes were presented.
Ms. Guthrie, if we want to amend that, I will amend that report to say we'd direct staff to bring back additional information moving forward.
That would sound much better.
I'll submit it that way to Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Next item on the agenda is the high school exam schedule for spring of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, traditional high schools and Gaston Early College. This is an action item and we're going to have Michael Faust with us tonight.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, and Dr. Hushard. I bring you greetings once again from the Accountability and Testing Department on behalf of Dr. Powers, who cannot be with us this, with us here this evening. Tonight, I have for your consideration the high school exam schedule for the spring semester, as Mr. Chris reported. As you will recall from the fall semester, all public high schools in North Carolina are required by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to administer final exams for all courses. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Office of Accountability and Testing requires that exams be administered during the last five days of the semester. The exam schedules that we will share with you this evening include the administration, the state mandated, and of course, uh, test in Biology, English Two, NC Math One, and NC Math Three, as well as the career and technical education exams, the teacher-made exams for those courses that do not have a state-required assessment. So on our screen, we see the spring semester for our traditional high schools, which, as Mr. Chris reported, uh, ends on Wednesday, May the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. As you can see here, this would place the traditional high schools' exam schedules as May sixteenth through the twenty-second. And then we have our early colleges. The spring semester for our early colleges ends a little earlier on Friday, May the seventeenth. And as you can see here, this would place the early college exam schedules as May the thirteenth through the seventeenth. And that is our, uh, recommendation from the Departments of Academic Services and Accountability and Testing. And that is all that I have to share with you this evening.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion we approve.
All right, second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank. All right, next item on the agenda is our annual engagement letter with the independent auditors. This is an action item. Gary Hoskins.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, Superintendent Hushard. Here to present an action item to approve, uh, the annual engagement, uh, letter with our new independent auditors. As Ms. Cherry mentioned in the report, uh, that we discuss this item at the Operations Committee, our longtime auditor has retired and we are recommending that we engage Forvis, uh, as our new auditor. Uh, Forvis is a legacy accounting firm from Dixon, uh, Dixon Hughes Goodman. And Dixon Hughes did our audit a number of years ago. So Forvis has the same audit procedures and processes that we're used to with our prior auditor. Uh, Forvis, uh, is the eighth-largest accounting firm in the United States. Um, because of their roots with Dixon Hughes Goodman, uh, they do a number of the large LEAs in the state of North Carolina, CMS, Wake, Guilford County, Forsyth County. Uh, so they are very familiar with school districts in the state of North Carolina and certainly large school districts in the state of North Carolina. Uh, the proposal from Forvis is to, to conduct our audit for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four is forty-nine thousand dollars. Last year, we paid our, our prior auditor forty-seven thousand dollars. So that's about a four point two-five percent increase, uh, which is consistent with what we've seen over the last several years. Uh, in addition, uh, we will be charged two thousand dollars as a one-time fee for Esser, end-of-Esser audit. That goes to all firms, all LEAs. And also there will be some travel costs associated. They're projecting about four thousand dollars. As you know, our prior auditor was here in Gaston County. Uh, the people I talked to, I think, are in High Point. The people I talked to, I think, are in High Point Guilford County area, so we would have some travel costs. So we are recommending that the board approve the contract, an engagement letter with Forvis for the audit of 2023, 2024. Yes, ma'am.
I get the ESR thing, and I get the travel costs, but how many, is there, will there just be one, one person that we'll be dealing with?
Not initially. They'll have a team that will come in, in and out. You know, we worked with our prior auditor for a number of years. He lived here in town, so he would come in, it could be 30 minutes, and pick up stuff and then go home and work on some things. But this will probably be an audit team, certainly their first year. They're not, you know, they've never been here, they're not used to us, so I would assume there'll be, he's set up to four people, you know, depending on what it is they're looking at and what point in time of the audit, so it would not just be one person.
Okay, Ms. Lovelace.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there another auditing firm in Gaston County that we could consider?
There's about, I think, five firms. They have to be approved by the LGC, the state of North Carolina. Anderson Smith and Wyke is the largest audit firm. They were the one that we used last year and the prior years. They were not able to replace our prior auditor, Vince Quinn's workload, and so they were not able to take us on as a client. The next audit firm would be Forvis, which has experience, as I mentioned, with larger firms. And then there's a few other smaller firms that just don't have the depth that we really would require at this point, so that's why we're recommending Forvis.
So at some point, you will be given a single auditor?
I cannot say that. I do not.
No, we have a single audit firm, and they will, you know, send the team that they feel best, will best help us out. And I would expect that it would be a team. It's probably pretty rare that you just have one auditor coming in year after year, and I would appreciate other, you know, eyes on things and other opinions.
Okay, any other discussion? I do need a motion, this is actually
I got a question. Those travel costs, that's, those are hard costs. I mean, we're not going to go above that if they have to send numerous folks down there. I mean, we still hold them to that threshold, correct?
That is, that is their proposal, yes. Once we sign the proposal and it says $4,000, then that's what it will be.
Yeah, that's what I was going to make sure. I know that's the proposal, but I want to make sure we hold our feet
Once we sign that engagement letter and it's a part of that engagement letter, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Make a motion that we accept the contract.
Second.
Second. Ms. Guthrie, any other discussion? If not, all in favor? That's your man. So Gary, you're up next. Superintendent's Budget Request, 2024, 2025. This is an information item.
Yes, sir. Each time, each March, we present the board with the superintendent's budget request, and this will be the request that really goes to the county commissioners. So the first thing we always talk about is the budget calendar, because there's certain statutory dates that we have to hit on this calendar. Right now, you can see we're at March 18th, we're presenting the superintendent's budget. This will be presented again for, as an action item at the April 15th board meeting. And then at that point, it's really up to this board and the county commissioners whether you want to have a joint meeting with the county commissioners and present your budget to the county commissioners. Typically, we will deliver this budget request to the county commissioners as soon as this board makes their approval, which is after April 15th. Typically, April, May, the county does their budget, we don't have any influence over that. We are required by, again, state law, that by June, the end of June 30th, and our last board meeting of the fiscal year is June 17th, that this board pass a balanced interim budget, so we will be presenting that even if the state has not yet passed their budget. We'll do 80% of our last year's budget. This is something we've unfortunately gotten really good at doing, because it's very seldom does a state have a budget prior to June 30th. Then at the time that the state has approved their budget, we will, you know, present to you the budget resolution. So just a budget overview, as we worked on this budget, we try to keep in mind that we support the vision, mission, and priorities and goals of this school system and of this board, to support college and career-ready students, have a healthy, safe, reliable schools and school district, provide innovation, which you think you just saw here in front of you, and then a qualified workforce. So our current budget, we're at $379 million. You can see the majority of that comes from state funding, 57% from state funding. The next, next largest is our local funding, and that's what we really spend most of our time here, is talking about our local budget request. And as you know, we have to have a balanced budget. So we have $379 million in initial revenues, this is for the current year. We also have $379 million of budgeted expenditures, and you can see that 71% of our expenditures are instructional. So with the state being the largest provider of funds for Gaston County schools, there's three methods in which they provide funds to us. The first is dollars, which I think, you know, everyone understands dollars. The second is months of employment and then positions. So those programs that are funded by the state with dollars are teacher assistants, clerical custodial, supplies, special programs, safety, et cetera. The months of employment, and that would, they would give us a set number of months, so for example, a principal, they would give us 12 months of employment for that principal, regardless of whether it's a high-salary principal or a low-salary principal, they pay that. And the same with positions, for teaching positions, they'll give us one teaching position, and they will pay that salary regardless of whether it's a high salary or low salary. Those just come to us in positions. Our state allotments, the primary determination for how much money we receive is from our student count, what we call our average daily membership, or ADM. The state of North Carolina just changed how they fund state school systems going forward, and it really will start next year. They've always projected what our ADM was going to be in the upcoming year, and then made adjustments, whether that adjustment was high or low. Now they're basing, they're basing that in what our ADM was in arrears, which means in the past. So they are going to be funding us for 2024, 2025, based on what our actual ADM or student enrollment was during the second month of the current year. And you can see right now, the second month of the current year, or ADM 2, which would be September of 2023, was 29,895 students, so slightly lower than what it is for this Federal programs, some of the key programs here, Title I, we've got 27 schools in Title I, our EC programs, our CTE, child nutrition, obviously. However, next year, we will not have COVID-19 funding, and that's about $27 million. We've been talking about this, you know, with principals, senior leadership, outside with other agencies, with DPI, that will be going away. It's what they're calling the ESR cliff, will be going away next year. And those COVID monies, excuse me, we know that those monies were going to go away. We knew that the date, what the date was for expiration, when those funds were extended to us, so we tried to use that money in things that were going to be one-time costs, whether it's a contract, you can see retention bonus, whether it's to purchase devices, Wi-Fi devices, student learning devices, et cetera. However, there would be some, you know, that, some positions that we had paid through ESR that we'll have to find other funding sources for. So our local operating request, this is the key to the superintendent's budget. A lot of people say, what do you pay for with your local money? Well, we pay for all of our supplements. We have teacher supplements, we have principal supplements, we have AP supplements, all those are local supplements. So as I mentioned, the teacher positions that we have, the principal months of, months of employment that we have, this is local money on top of that, to give them additional funding. Instructional supplies, all our custodial and maintenance supplies, technology, you know, going forward, keeping these Chromebooks refreshed every year, comes from local money. Our utilities and insurance, those, those costs keep going up. SROs, athletics, arts, and charter school allotments. We're paying about 10% of what we get from the county back to charter schools, so of the $53 million that we get from the county, we're sending five and a half to six million back out to the charter schools. Yes, ma'am? Sure?
I think I read from your report that perhaps Ridgeview would not be granted a charter. So how will we determine ADM, or will that be considered in the superintendent's budget?
Yes, ma'am, it will be. It's, you know, one of the challenges that we're going to have is that our funding is based on the current school year's ADM number two, month two. That, that school may not close until, you know, the end of this year, and all those kids may come in August, so we may have to get an adjustment for that later. So this is just a brief history over the last three years of our local operating funding. So 2020, 2021, we received $49.8 million from the county. They provided us with almost $1.7 million of additional funds that year. The next year, they did give us additional funds, but that dropped to $1 million. And then the current year that we're in, again, they did give us additional funds, but that dropped to half a million dollars, so we're right now just over $53 million. So as we talked about in the board retreat, we did survey our stakeholders. That's been district leadership, school administrators, teachers, parents, and the public being out on the, on the website. And the survey asked, what five funding priorities would you suggest that we, we focused on in the coming years? And we've been doing this for about 10 years now, so we have some string of data over the last several years, and these are the 22 items that we asked them to select five of these to provide their input on what they thought we should be focusing on in the next school year. So the top five from the budget survey, you can see number one, increased teacher supplement. By far, it was number one. It's 85% of the people, and there were 281 people that were interviewed, 85% had that as one of their top five choices. That's up 18% from where we were five years ago. Number two, increased classified salaries, that was at 60%, and you can see that's increased 13% over the last five years. And the other ones, more teacher assistance, increased student support, and upgrade school safety systems. So when you drill down a little bit and say, well, how are these items funded? The top two are funded with the county, county funds. So that is included in our county expansion request. That is increasing the teacher supplement and increasing classified salaries. The next two items are state-funded. So as I mentioned, state funds really follows ADM for the most part. More TAs and increased teacher support, a lot of that's from, from state funds. And then the final item, upgrade school safety systems, that's your school bond funds, and we've been, we've been working on that and will continue to work on that in the future. So in our local operating request, we have, break it down into two different things. Ongoing expenditures, which exactly what it means is, in order to maintain our current standard that we have, these are the funds that we will need, and then any new expenditures, any new initiatives, any new salary that's not state-mandated would be included in that. So in the superintendent's budget request, our ongoing expenditures request will be four point, almost $4.2 million. The new expenditures, $3 million, and that's solely with teacher salary supplement increase with a total of $7.2 million. So as we look at the ongoing, as I mentioned, you know, every year, we have to refresh our student Chromebooks, and that's about 7,200. And every year, we replace 2nd grade, 6th grade, and 9th grade. That's about $2.1 million. We've been paying that over the past several years through COVID. And actually, I think on this board consent agenda is the purchase of those Chromebooks for the next year. We're using our ESR funds and other funds to buy those Chromebooks for next year. So when we come to you probably a year from now, wanting to buy those Chromebooks for the following year, we're going to need to have some local funds in order to keep that program moving. Next item is inflation. Inflation eats away at our, you know, our dollars that we're able to use. We are asking for 2.4% on our purchased goods and services. Locally purchased goods and services are about 14 and a half million, so that comes to 350,000. In addition, according to Duke Energy, our energy costs are going to go up about 8.3% next year. This is just electrical and gas, this is not water. Our utility bills are about 5.3 million, so that increases, that would increase our local cost by 435,000, so a total for both inflationary items is 785,000. We also ask for an increase in our employee compensation. You know, the state increased the salary for all classified and most of the certified employees by 4%. They have an absolute teacher scale. So we will be asking for 4% for our local, locally-paid employees. That's $668,000, because we can't give somebody that's funded with a state salary a 4% increase and not the local salary. And then with the salary comes the increase in benefits. You know, healthcare benefits have been going up, retirement costs have been going up, so those increases would go up just over $600,000. So on our new expenditures, I mentioned $3 million, we're asking for teacher salary supplements. The county has done a good job over the last eight, 10 years of increasing our salary supplements. They've actually gone up just under $5 million, plus you have the state salary supplement. However, when you look at where we are in relation to other similar-sized school districts, we are at the bottom. And you can see Cabarrus and Union are in green because they're fairly close to where we are. The other LEAs are roughly the same size, but not necessarily the same location. Our average LEA, or our average teacher salary supplement, local salary supplement is $3,860. The state average is $5,984. And this comes from DPI. When you look at our local area, obviously Charlotte Mecklenburg is, is at the very top. We're not too far from the bottom, even in our local area. We do beat out Roan, Salisbury, and Cleveland. However, Catawba County, Lincoln County, right straight up 321, are fairly, much higher than we are. So, and when you look at what we've done, and I mentioned the county's done a lot over the last 10 years, we've increased our salary supplement $1,683 over the last nine or 10 years. The state average has moved up $2,431, so we're getting further and further behind the state. When you look at Union County, that's really the one we were trying to hit about eight or 10 years ago, they've moved up $2,221. And even Cleveland County, which is below us, they're moving at a faster rate than we are. So we've been doing about $500,000 a year. When I say we, the county has been giving us about $500,000 a year, and that, and that has just not been enough in order to keep up with what everyone else is doing. So our operating budget request, as I mentioned, we're currently slightly over $53 million. We're asking for $4.2 million in ongoing expenditures, $3 million in new expenditures for a total county request of $60.1 million, almost 60.2 million. That's 4.8 million more than what we asked for last year, but keep in mind, last year, we had all the COVID money. We told them, we're not asking this because we're, we're funding it with COVID. COVID money's going away, and that's why that increase is, is happening. Our capital outlay, just as a reminder, Our capital outlay, just as a reminder, school bonds is new construction, classroom additions, and capital replacements. That's not what we're talking about with capital outlays. Capital outlays are maintenance, preventative maintenance, minor repairs, contracted facility services. For all of our capital, uh, yeah, capital items, roofing, HVAC, furniture, et cetera. So when you look at the age of our buildings, I know it seems we're always building a new one, um, but it takes two or three years to build a new building, and we've got 57 schools. So 75% of our schools, even though all the, we've done, what, four new schools, and we've got the fifth one currently built, currently under construction, we still have 75% of our schools that have a weighted average age of 40 years old or older. And that drives up maintenance costs. And when you look at sort of an industry guideline of what maintenance cost should be, this is from Managing for Results in America's Great City Schools. In 2021, 2022, that's the most recent information they had available, the upper quartile on a per square foot maintenance cost was $1.66. The lower quartile was $1.9 cents. We're currently at 43 cents. So we're at 43 cents plus 75% of our schools are 40 years old or older. It's not like we have a new, uh, fleet of, of, of buildings out there. So when we look at, we do have 5.1 million square feet of, of office or of administrative buildings and schools, and we get 2.2 million dollars, which as I mentioned, is 43 cents per square foot. We are requesting the median number, which I just showed you here, of $1.31 per square foot, and that would come to 6.7 million dollars. So that is our, um, the superintendent's, uh, capital outlay request. And that 6.7 million dollars, you would provide us months of money for some technology, uh, vehicles, FFNE, as well as normal general renovations. So we do believe that this budget request supports, uh, the board's vision, uh, to inspire success in a lifetime of learning. We'll be happy to open it up to any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Gary? Comments?
I got a real quick question, Gary. Where did, um, the 2.4% for inflation for next year number come from?
Bureau of Labor Statistics, I think I looked back to February, they were proposing for, I can't remember, it's 2025. It doesn't follow our school year, so I just had to pick. Um, but, but it came from one of those publications.
Okay. Cause we're right now about 3.2%.
Right. I think they're projecting a decline in, in, in inflation. I hope that happens, but who knows?
That last mile is the hardest mile. To get to two, two and a half is going to be tough.
Hey, Gary, back in January, we met at the Raider Center. Um, you gave that slide, and I'll find it, it's called COVID-19 Funds Have Been Used For, and you listed, um, different items. I asked if I could see a listing of what monies went for. So all it did was list the thing. I, could you get that to me?
By the state to put that on, we give that information to the state, and they put it on a website. But let me find that website and get you that information. I do, I do remember that. I apologize for not getting that to you.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Gary. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. I hear a motion for approval of those items on the list.
Mr. Chair, on, just a point I would request, that the construction repair change orders be stricken, since there is none. It's a blank page. It doesn't seem fitting to approve nothing.
Okay. So we'll amend it and take out item C.
So moved after that.
Okay. Construction, repair, change. I have a second, uh, Mr. Debbins, I see his hand. Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. This leads us to our superintendent comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to begin by thanking East Gaston High School and our TSS department for the great classroom moment. It's just one example of all the great teaching and learning that's taking place in our schools, and I'm so excited to see always that classroom moment presented to us. I'd like to share some information with you about several upcoming dates and activities. This Saturday, March 23rd, we will have our all-county middle school band concert in the auditorium at Holbrook Middle School, beginning at 2 o'clock. Public is invited and encouraged to attend. We also want to make sure that our high school students and their parents know that this Saturday at Forestu High School, they're hosting a prom closet from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This is an opportunity for students who are in need of a dress for the prom to come get one free of charge. On Sunday, March 24th, we are hosting the Gaston County Art Show and Reception from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at Luray Mill in Gastonia. If you cannot attend the opening reception and awards ceremony this Sunday, the artwork will be on display until May 4th. So you can drop by on Tuesdays through Fridays from 10:00 to 5:00, and Saturday is 11:00 to 4:00 to see the outstanding student work. I'd also encourage you while you're at the Luray Mill to stop and visit the African American Museum of History and Culture, which is open to the public on Tuesdays and Fridays from 11:00 to 4:00. Next week, from March 25th through the 28th, our academically gifted department is hosting the Math Masters and the Battle of the Book competitions for our elementary schools. We also have two high schools hosting spring musicals next month, which are always exciting. Highland School of Technology will present Mamma Mia on April 12th and 13th at 7:00 PM, and April 14th at 2:00 PM. And North Gaston High School will present Little Shops of Horrors on April 18th, 19th, 20th, and on the 20th at 7:00 PM. As a reminder, spring break will be here very soon. I know we have many folks who are excited about that. Friday, March 29th is a holiday for all students and employees, and our schools and the central office will be closed. April 1st through the 4th are teacher annual leave days, and Friday, April 5th is an optional teacher work day, which means no school for students that week of April 1st. Our school offices will be closed to the public during spring break, and students return to school on Monday, April 8th. Also, we will host a springtime job fair for both teaching and non-teaching positions on Tuesday, April 16th at the Gastonia Conference Center. The job fair is from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. For anyone interested in attending the job fair, may visit the website, complete the online registration, and click the jobs tab. And we had a very successful, uh, outcome for that, uh, in the fall. I'd like to close by saying thank you to Gaston County Schools for giving me a great first month as superintendent. Over the past few weeks, I've been able to meet with the faculty and staff at seven schools. I have eight scheduled to meet next week, over the next two weeks, actually. And all the meetings have been positive, energizing, and a great way for me to gain useful feedback that we'll use to make us stronger and move forward. As I spend time in our schools and meet people across the community, I've been able to see firsthand how invested people are in our schools. Our teachers, employees, and parents, as well as community leaders, all of them are interested in doing what's best and what's necessary to make our schools successful. We are family, and I'm filled with honor, gratitude, and optimism as we work together for our future. Mr. Chairman, that completes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hushar. And as we close our meeting, I'd like to thank everyone for their support for the board and Gaston County Schools. We are proud of our schools and all who work hard and do good things for our childrens. We do have three birthdays in March. Uh, our Dr. Hushar Superintendent, March 2nd, he turned 50. A.M. Stevens, March 3rd, he turned 40. And Robbie Lovelace, March 24th, he turned 60.
Thank you. I feel you had to say it.
So I need a motion for closed session.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11A3 for consultation with attorney and A6 for personnel.
And the second is Mr. Stevens. All in favor? That's unanimous.
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 198 199 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 599 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 799 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 999 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1030 1031 1032 1033 1034 1035 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1042 1043 1044 1045 1046 1047 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 1053 1054 1055 1056 1057 1058 1059 1060 1061 1062 1063 1064 1065 1066 1067 1068 1069 1070 1071 1072 1073 1074 1075 1076 1077 1078 1079 1080 1081 1082 1083 1084 1085 1086 1087 1088 1089 1090 1091 1092 1093 1094 1095 1096 1097 1098 1099 1100 1101 1102 1103 1104 1105 1106 1107 1108 1109 1110 1111 1112 1113 1114 1115 1116 1117 1118 1119 1120 1121 1122 1123 1124 1125 1126 1127 1128 1129 1130 1131 1132 1133 1134 1135 1136 1137 1138 1139 1140 1141 1142 1143 1144 1145 1146 1147 1148 1149 1150 1151 1152 1153 1154 1155 1156 1157 1158 1159 1160 1161 1162 1163 1164 1165 1166 1167 1168 1169 1170 1171 1172 1173 1174 1175 1176 1177 1178 1179 1180 1181 1182 1183 1184 1185 1186 1187 1188 1189 1190 1191 1192 1193 1194 1195 1196 1197 1198 1199 1200 1201 1202 1203 1204 1205 1206 1207 1208 1209 1210 1211 1212 1213 1214 1215 1216 1217 1218 1219 1220 1221 1222 1223 1224 1225 1226 1227 1228 1229 1230 1231 1232 1233 1234 1235 1236 1237 1238 1239 1240 1241 1242 1243 1244 1245 1246 1247 1248 1249 1250 1251 1252 1253 1254 1255 1256 1257 1258 1259 1260 1261 1262 1263 1264 1265 1266 1267 1268 1269 1270 1271 1272 1273 1274 1275 1276 1277 1278 1279 1280 1281 1282 1283 1284 1285 1286 1287 1288 1289 1290 1291 1292 1293 1294 1295 1296 1297 1298 1299 1300 1301 1302 1303 1304 1305 1306 1307 1308 1309 1310 1311 1312 1313 1314 1315 1316 1317 1318 1319 1320 1321 1322 1323 1324 1325 1326 1327 1328 1329 1330 1331 1332 1333 1334 1335 1336 1337 1338 1339 1340 1341 1342 1343 1344 1345 1346 1347 1348 1349 1350 1351 1352 1353 1354 1355 1356 1357 1358 1359 1360 1361 1362 1363 1364 1365 1366 1367 1368 1369 1370 1371 1372 1373 1374 1375 1376 1377 1378 1379 1380 1381 1382 1383 1384 1385 1386 1387 1388 1389 1390 1391 1392 1393 1394 1395 1396 1397 1398 1399 1400 1401 1402 1403 1404 1405 1406 1407 1408 1409 1410 1411 1412 1413 1414 1415 1416 1417 1418 1419 1420 1421 1422 1423 1424 1425 1426 1427 1428 1429 1430 1431 1432 1433 1434 1435 1436 1437 1438 1439 1440 1441 1442 1443 1444 1445 1446 1447 1448 1449 1450 1451 1452 1453 1454 1455 1456 1457 1458 1459 1460 1461 1462 1463 1464 1465 1466 1467 1468 1469 1470 1471 1472 1473 1474 1475 1476 1477 1478 1479 1480 1481 1482 1483 1484 1485 1486 1487 1488 1489 1490 1491 1492 1493 1494 1495 1496 1497 1498 1499 1500 1501 1502 1503 1504 1505 1506 1507 1508 1509 1510 1511 1512 1513 1514 1515 1516 1517 1518 1519 1520 1521 1522 1523 1524 1525 1526 1527 1528 1529 1530 1531 1532 1533 1534 1535 1536 1537 1538 1539 1540 1541 1542 1543 1544 1545 1546 1547 1548 1549 1550 1551 1552 1553 1554 1555 1556 1557 1558 1559 1560 1561 1562 1563 1564 1565 1566 1567 1568 1569 1570 1571 1572 1573 1574 1575 1576 1577 1578 1579 1580 1581 1582 1583 1584 1585 1586 1587 1588 1589 1590 1591 1592 1593 1594 1595 1596 1597 1598 1599 1600 1601 1602 1603 1604 1605 1606 1607 1608 1609 1610 1611 1612 1613 1614 1615 1616 1617 1618 1619 1620 1621 1622 1623 1624 1625 1626 1627 1628 1629 1630 1631 1632 1633 1634 1635 1636
We're back in open session. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hushar.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend -- make a recommendation for Bessie Harvey, the Assistant Superintendent for Operations, for a three-and-a-half-year contract running concurrently with mine through June 30th of 2027.
Can I make a motion that we accept that contract?
Okay, I need a second. Ms. Lovelace, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend Rebecca Powers for the position of Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services, for a three-and-a-half-year contract running concurrently with mine through June 30th of 2027.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make another motion that we accept that contract.
All right, I need a second. Ms. Lovelace, all in favor? That's unanimous. This takes us to the adjournment, so I need a motion of Mr. Chris, second of Mr. Dedman, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you and have a good evening.